All right, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the October 14th meeting of the Escondido Planning Commission. If I'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. And if you could please stand and salute the flag.
Freddie, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of America, with all due diligence, under God, in the name of the Lord, the Father, and the Son, and the Holy Spirit.
If we could get the roll call, please?
Chair Wyler.
Here.
Commissioner Macaro.
Here.
Commissioner Spear.
Here.
Commissioner Jester.
Here.
Commissioner Stevie.
Here.
Commissioner Correll.
Here.
Commissioner Gustafson.
Here.
Thank you. We've got a full house, at least up here. Moving on to approval of the minutes. Any questions, comments on the minutes? If not, we'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Macaro. Do we have a second? I'll second. If we can go ahead and get the vote.
Motion to approve the September 23rd, 2025 meeting minutes. Chair Wyler.
Yes.
Commissioner Macaro.
Yes.
Commissioner Spear.
Approve.
Commissioner Jester.
Approve.
Commissioner Stevie.
Approve.
Commissioner Correll.
Abstain.
Commissioner Gustafson.
Approve.
The vote is six to zero to one to approve the September 23rd, 2025 meeting minutes.
Moving on to written communications. Any written communications on anything not on the agenda this evening?
No.
Same with oral communications.
None.
Moving on to public hearings, actually moving on to current business. So we have item number two, which is a presentation by staff on Assembly Bill 130 and Senate Bill 131. And Ms. Schiffman, I think you're up.
There we go. Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Sally Schiffman. I'm a principal planner with your planning division, and I will be doing presentation tonight on AB 130 and SB 131. I'll be talking about what AB 130 is. It's a pretty extensive bill that was passed this year, and then it comes with a sister bill, SB 131. So I'll explain what that does and how it impacts us here at the city, and then close this out with what it means for us. These bills were both signed on June 30th of this year. They went into effect immediately, and they are intended to further address the housing crisis in California, and specifically locally here in Escondido, with faster processing timelines and reducing as many hurdles as possible to housing developments. So we're going to start with AB 130. This was a very extensive omnibus bill. Approximately 60 revisions, deletions, or additions were made that affected many, many codes, as you can see here. Many of these changes were non-consequential. It was code referencing, cross-referencing, and whatnot, editorial changes and the like. However, some of the changes were more meaningful and amended things like environmental review rules, housing approval processes, building codes, HOA enforcement, and how school districts can handle their surplus land. And, you know, because of the broad scope of this bill, it, of course, impacts our work here at the city, but it also impacts our local developers, our homeowners, our renters, and our school district. So how do we navigate this extensive bill? I'm going to distill this down to the items that most directly impact our work here in our Development Services Department and for you as decision-makers here at the city. We're going to start with the two most impactful topic areas. This has to do with housing project streamlining and SEQA reforms, as these have the largest implications. And then other items that we're going to talk about may impact our zoning code, which, of course, any of those changes would make their way to you over the next six months or so. And then we also may just simply find ourselves fielding questions by the public, and so it's worth getting to know, kind of just a general understanding of what these bills speak to. As you are aware, in recent years, the state has passed temporary measures to prevent delays in housing approval. This was the Housing Accountability Act, Housing Crisis Act, there's Permit Streamlining Act. AB 130 takes a lot of the temporary measures that were set to expire and basically makes them permanent. So that is primarily what this aspect of the bill does. This locks in regulations that may pertain to a project at the time that a pre-application is submitted. It restricts the number of hearings that a housing project can go through. It requires exhaustive comment letters, things that we're already doing, but we will now be doing them in perpetuity. Something you may already be aware of with AB 130 is that it created a new statutory exemption for housing projects, and this is the most impactful area for our work here. Traditionally, projects need to go through SEQA, California Environmental Quality Act Review, and this process can be lengthy, and it can cost a lot of money for applicants. This new statutory exemption covers specifics, I'm going to go over those, and it is for infill housing development projects. So it excludes anything that has hotel or motel components to it. It is for housing projects only. The site, this now applies to project sites that are up to 20 acres in size or five acres for builder's remedy. We don't have to worry about builder's remedy here in Escondido, but it's important to note. Location, project needs to be in an incorporated city or a census-defined urban area. This includes everything that we would see here in Escondido. And the site has to either be previously developed as an urban use, which is a pretty broad spectrum of uses, or surrounded by urban uses. The project needs to be consistent with the general plan and zoning code, with the caveat that if our zoning code or our zoning and our land use designations do not match each other, then the project would only have to be consistent with one. The density of the site must be at least 50% of our so-called Mullen density requirements here in Escondido. That means the project would have to be at least 15 units per acre. Government Code 65913.4, this was related to SB 35, which is the Housing Crisis Act. This established certain housing projects could, these criteria would apply to certain housing projects in cities that didn't have a qualified housing element. AB 130 now applies these standards to housing projects that are in a city regardless of their housing element qualifications. Projects that are located on sites with any of these listed scenarios would likely not qualify for the SEQA exemption. There are a few caveats related to fire, earthquake, and flood zones, and a project can be located on the site that may not meet these criteria, as long as the project is designed to mitigate for those potential impacts. For example, if a site is in a very high fire hazard severity zone, it may be able to incorporate adopted fire hazard mitigation, either from local or state standards, and that would then qualify it. Or if a site is in a flood hazard area, it could choose to, the developer could choose to process a FEMA MAP revision or no RISE certification, and then it's no longer out of compliance. Another change under AB 130 is related to historic preservation. So at the time a project is submitted, if it was to have to demolish an existing historic structure, that structure would have to already be registered as a historic structure. So that's going to be a change that we'll have to look for in these projects that are And then finally, we have requirements related to hazards, air quality, and prevailing wage. Applicants will need to submit a Phase One Site Assessment Study at the start of their project to determine if there are any hazardous materials on site. Any projects within 500 feet of a freeway will be required to have centralized HVAC systems with MERV 16 filters. This is up from the current standard of MERV 13 filters. And no balconies would be allowed to face the freeway. And then finally, for projects that are utilizing the exemption, prevailing wage would be required for projects that are 100% affordable, or if the buildings are greater than 85 feet, regardless of whether they have affordability components. Okay, everybody still with me? The next big reform under AB 130 has to do with tribal consultation timelines. All projects currently undergo tribal consultation per AB 52, but right now, it's, there's no specified timeline for that process. So this bill now tightens that up. Basically, within 14 days of an application being deemed complete, staff needs to notify tribes with interest in the site that they have the opportunity for consultation. The tribes then have 60 days to respond, and if requested, that consultation will have to start within 14 days of that request, and the consultation itself would last a maximum of 45 days with one 15-day extension. If a tribe does not respond to the notification, then we wait 60 days, and consultation is considered closed at that time. Once consultation is closed, whether they ask for it or we just close after 60 days, the project then must go before decision-makers within 30 days. Another change is that there are now some specified standard conditions of approval related to tribal cultural resources. These will now be, need to be placed on all projects, and they can only be removed or altered during consultation with tribes. So if the tribe chooses not to consult, we will still be having those mitigation measures The state currently has a transit-oriented development implementation program. This is administered by the State Department of Housing and Community Development. AB 130 establishes an option to pay an in-lie contribution to the TOD Implementation Fund as mitigation for projects that have significant transportation impacts related to vehicle miles traveled. So this is a new mitigation mechanism for projects with VMT impacts. Further, the bill expands the framework for allocating those funds back into eligible entities through loans and grants for the purpose of funding affordable housing or related infrastructure projects. There are some criteria. Funding priorities, first and foremost, they're going to be looking at location. So they'll look at same region and location-efficient areas. Money would then be allocated to simply the same region, and then beyond that, we would look at adjacent regions with location-efficient areas. They'll also be looking at projects with the greatest percentage of affordability, projects that may require gap funding, and then finally, any projects that, you know, where their project readiness is. Grant eligibility will be based on specified affordable housing criteria, and then the bill has really expanded what these monies can be used for as they relate to infrastructure projects, and there's going to be a lot more opportunities for grants through this. This money can go towards capital improvement projects that may be conditioned specifically to affordable housing projects. So for instance, if they need to upgrade their sewer or water system, create new connection points for utilities, even noise mitigation, so for instance, putting in retaining walls or some sort of wall barrier. This money could also go towards capital improvements that clearly and substantially enhance public pedestrian or bicycle access from one or more specified identified, specifically identified housing developments. This can include pedestrian walkways, plaza areas. It can also go as far as going towards intelligent transportation systems or new information systems. So as we upgrade our lights, for example, the streetlights, we would potentially be able to get money for that. And then money can also go towards the acquisition and rehabilitation of affordable housing Other less impactful but still notable aspects of AB 130, the Affordable Housing on Faith and Higher Education Lands Act, also known as SB 4. The new bill does require us to do annual reporting of any new homes that may be built on land owned or operated by recognized religious institutions or institutions of higher education. Childcare centers in association with housing projects will now be allowed by right on these lands with no number limitations. We would not be able to impose conditional use permits or development plans, anything of the sort. Height allowances were modified. These projects would now be allowed to go one story or 11 feet above the maximum height of the underlying zone in order to allow for a minimum density of 30 units per acre. And then finally, it modified parking requirements to specify that cities cannot impose parking beyond one parking space per unit. And finally, under AB 130 that we'll talk about tonight is building code changes. This is, there will be no new building standards to be imposed between October of this year, this has already gone into effect, and June of 2031, unless those changes are for emergency-related issues such as health and safety, like home hardening. This does not totally affect Escondido. We do not have REACH codes here in the city. We just simply follow the California Building Code, but this is meant to eliminate surprises for developers when new codes may come up. There is an additional code that we'll start seeing on building plans. This is the International Wildland Urban Interface Code. And then finally, a big change that we will be paying attention to at the staff level is that when a, when a development applies for their model home building permit, whatever code that model home permit is issued for, that code will apply to all subsequent homes built in that development for 10 years. So if they submit under 2025 building code, that will be the code that applies to future homes through 2035. I'm not going to go over all of these, but this is how extensive this bill was. So these are other topic areas that cover process, taxes, fund allocation, reporting requirements. As you can see, it's quite extensive. If there's anything on this list that you do think is interesting or you would like additional information on, please let us know. We can get that to you at a later date. Okay, now we have SB 131. This is not as extensive a bill. It was a sister bill, so to speak, to AB 130. One of the big things that came out of this is that it adds a near-miss streamlining aspect. So when a housing project that almost qualifies for an exemption, whether it's the new statutory exemption or one of our standard categorical exemptions, for instance, category exemption 32 is an infill exemption, if it would have qualified except for one issue area, then only that one issue area needs to be reviewed under SEQA. So this is going to really narrow down our SEQA documents that may come before this And in cases where a project has a potentially significant impact and it's a focused EIR that needs to occur, they will not have to do an analysis of alternatives, nor would they have to look at growth-inducing impacts. Other changes under SB 131, there is also a new exemption that is created for housing element rezonings. So this would be when a rezone is required under, this will be for our seventh cycle, so it's not going to be coming for next few years. We don't have any other rezones that'll be occurring. But any future rezones that are a result of a housing element, as long as they are part of a schedule of actions, then those, those actions would be exempt from SEQA review. It also further expanded SEQA exemptions for certain community benefit projects, childcare and daycare centers, rural health clinics, nonprofit food banks, and qualified advanced manufacturing facilities. And then finally, something the city attorney's office is probably going to be happy about, this bill does clarify what is required of an administrative record. So when a project is challenged under SEQA, in the past, hundreds and hundreds of papers would have to go out, and at this point, the bill does say that draft documents, if there was something that was never presented out to the public, you don't necessarily have to include those in the record, as well as some internal communication, any kind of logistical, you know, setting up meetings or just back and forth in that way, those sort of things, those emails and whatnot, would not need to be part of the record. There's always exceptions to these. Best course of action is always check in with council, make sure that we know what we should or should not be holding on to and what may need to be released. So what does this mean for the city of Escondido? At the staff level, we're going to be making some updates to our application materials. We need to ensure that we're complying with these new streamlined timelines. We're going to be updating our standard conditions of approval and our mitigation measures as they relate to air quality, tribal cultural resources, hazardous materials, and vehicle miles traveled. We will be making some relatively minor zoning change, zoning code changes related to ADUs, height allowances for those faith and higher education lands, and the removal of limitations to childcare center. You will see those later this year or early next. This will again tighten our review times specifically for tribal consultation. That'll be worked out at the staff level as to how this will need to overlap with our notification process for public hearings, because now that is a very tight timeline for us. And then for this commission, you will see either fewer environmental reviews. These will now fall under exemptions, whereas before they would have been maybe an M and D. And when you do see these environmental documents for housing projects, they will likely be much more streamlined and shorter. On the positive side, we should be seeing more housing projects that come in with higher densities. This in turn should, in theory, create more affordable homes, and we will be looking at more grant or loan opportunities through these new funding mechanisms. So we'll be on the lookout for those opportunities. All of this information presented to you tonight comes from the legislation itself. I do encourage you to take a look at that. They're, they're meaty, but it's worth the read. I think it's important for us to understand what this is. And that concludes my presentation. Thank you for sticking with it, and I would be happy to answer any questions.
Oops, excuse me. There. Thanks for the presentation. Any questions of staff? Commissioner Correll.
I just wanted a clarification. You mentioned briefly about like demolition and then about historic. Can you clarify what you were trying to communicate? Because I didn't quite understand what you were saying. It sounded like something like, in order to be demolished, it had to be registered.
In order for it to be considered historic.
Okay.
It needs to be on a register.
Okay.
When an application submitted.
Okay.
Whereas currently, we would determine whether or not it's considered historic. We would have to already know that.
And an application for what?
When a housing project application comes in at the planning department for entitlement review.
Okay. In regards to, so the existing home is historic, or is or is not historic. You have an application come in, an application for what? To demolish the structure?
For a new housing development. They're going to have to demolish the existing home in order to put the new homes in.
Okay. So it has to be historic for what purpose?
It has to be qualified on, on our local, state, or national register.
Okay.
As a historic structure.
In order to tear it down?
In order for, in order for us to determine that that particular new exemption would not apply to this project.
Okay.
To the, to the project.
All right.
Commissioner Jester.
Thank you for the presentation. It was excellent. Very good. Ken, is there a way to get a copy of it?
Yes, we could email it out.
I would love to get a copy of that. It was a very good synopsis of the entire thing.
Thank you.
Really good read. And I'll, I've been kind of perusing the legislation, and it's meaty.
It is.
Never liked reading that. But I want to go to sleep, it's okay.
Yeah, and if you could, Ms. Schiffman, I would like to get a copy of the presentation as well. I don't know about the rest of the commissioners. I didn't want to speak for them.
The planning division will send out to all the commissioners a copy of the presentation tomorrow.
Okay, thank you.
And if I could just add, just as an emphasis as to how kind of fast and furious all this new law is coming down at the city, just actually today, another bill was passed, it's SB 158, and they're calling it a cleanup bill. It makes a few cleanup changes to both of the bills we've talked about tonight. So there will be some additional little tweaks in there, you know, we'll go, we haven't had a chance, obviously, to go through all that, but just to kind of give you guys a sense of how much is coming down, and the staff has done an excellent and amazing job of really just, you know, pulling through all this hard, hard things to read to figure out where to go from here.
All right, terrific. Thank you. Commissioner Spear.
Yeah, also thanks for your presentation. Grateful for it. I just wanted to catch up a little bit on the TOD Implementation Fund. I didn't catch what that fund was, the object of that fund. What was that for?
So this is a new mechanism for projects that have impacts related to vehicle miles traveled. This will create a new mitigation option to pay an in-lie fee versus somehow reduce their vehicle miles traveled.
Okay. That's what that's for.
And it'll be, it'll be collected at the state level and then reallocated regionally for, through these grants.
An indulgence, so to speak, is what it's for. Okay, got it. Second question I had was, I was just trying to understand, you had discussed the homes built on religious lands, SB 4.
Mm-hmm.
It makes sense to me when we're talking about higher education, which was also tagged onto that, if there's, for example, a religious school that has dormitory use, but I'm trying to picture what, are we talking about a situation where religious lands will be used to build housing?
Correct.
And so the, I guess, a church would then get in the business of building homes for residential reasons, not for religious reasons? Well, I'm just trying to envision what that would, what that would look like in a project that might come to us.
Sure. So this is already an allowance by state law, and we have not had any projects yet in the city that has, have requested this, but we now have some parameters through state law that specify how housing could be built on lands owned or operated by recognized religious entities. So they could choose to build homes on church land.
Okay, so how would that, how would, how would, how would that make it different than any other land? The fact that it's owned by a religion, by a religious organization, does that give them advantages in some fashion?
The parameters do stipulate densities that may be greater than what the religious facility currently sits on. So they may be on single-family residential zoned land, and yet they would be allowed to have 30 units per acre versus, you know, whatever the stipulation is. Again, we don't have any projects that fall under this yet, but there are religiously-owned or operated lands that are commercial, for example, and we would be, under state law, they could be permitted to build homes should they request it.
Okay.
This is the yes in God's backyard, if you have heard of that kind of movement in state law.
Okay.
We have the yes in my backyard. We have the yes in God's backyard. That's what that's.
I mean, we, we had this last week, or the last time we met, right?
I was going to say, kind of.
The temple, would the temple property be considered religious land?
Yes. The temple property is owned by, I believe, the Iscon. The temple property is owned by, I believe, the Iscon owner. I, I don't know. We'd have to, you know, defer to some research on whether they constitute, what constitutes a religious entity. But I think the idea is that we would need an invocation to some degree from the applicant saying, we're leveraging SB four. So while if the owner of the Iscon property is in fact a qualified, you know, applicant under the state law, they proposed a reasonable use of their land based on just the underlying zoning, the subdivision, and then the religious facility through the CUP. In this instance, under SB four, they're going above and beyond what the city's ordinance is for zoning allow. So not quite the same.
Thank you.
Any other questions of staff? You know what? Commissioner Spear actually had asked similar questions that I had. If you could go back to page 11 of the presentation. Nope, that one got, that one got answered, not on page 12. Okay. So the item regarding childcare centers by right, is that only on sites owned by a religious facility? Or is this any childcare center?
This particular aspect of the bill is for childcare centers on religious land associated with housing projects.
Got it. Okay. No, I don't have any other questions. So thank you for the informative presentation. It was much appreciated.
Thank you.
Anybody else? All right. I think that moves us on to the downtown specific plan retail corridor subcommittee update. Commissioner Stevie, I would assume.
Yeah. So I have a, I have a presentation. All right. Good evening, fellow commissioners. So I'm here to present you with an update from the Grand Avenue Revitalization Subcommittee. Just as a quick reminder, the purpose of this subcommittee was, we established it to gather stakeholder perspectives and identify key growth opportunities, recommend near and long-term actions that will help Grand Avenue reach its full potential as a vibrant, economically sustainable, and culturally distinctive downtown corridor. So where are we at? To date, the subcommittee has conducted 10 in-depth stakeholder interviews. Each respondent participated in a structured questionnaire that was designed to surface a couple of different things, recurring challenges, opportunities, and most of all, ideas for downtown Escondido's future. All of these responses so far have been analyzed for recurring themes. And to the best of our ability, we put together kind of verbatim language presentations so you could get a sense of what we're hearing as we're conducting these interviews. By way of reminder, the area we're really considering right now is Grand Avenue between Ivy and Center City. And then on the north and south, it's sort of blocked in by Valley Parkway and Second Avenue. So that whole kind of stretch is really where we're focusing our conversations and stakeholder interviews and interests. So the first theme that's emerged has to do with activation. Stakeholders overwhelmingly expressed a desire to see Grand Avenue come to life beyond the existing events that are happening there. Many noted that the Vision Project's physical improvements were a major step forward, but they did emphasize the need for consistent year-round activity. I'm going to just read the first and second stakeholder voice, but you all have a copy of the packet with more comments than I'm going to include often in this presentation so you can review this later. The first example of this, clients and others have expressed to me that they wish there were more things to do on Grand. There's nothing to do on Grand Avenue. If we had a bowling alley, or arcades, or just places where people would want to hang out and spend time and do activities, that would be great, shows, concerts, et cetera. Another stakeholder said, I want to host small makers or wellness fairs, bring people together regularly, more events like a roller rink. And I have pictured here a shot from when they did the ups and downs style roller rink on Grand Avenue last Christmas. The, the bottom line is foot traffic, and events that activate foot traffic are a strong desire. The insight here is stakeholders are ready to participate in and host these activations. What they need is the city's role here can be to remove friction, coordinate communication, and really create a framework for recurring family-friendly programming. The next theme that emerged, they feel like there are barriers to improvement on Grand. Many of the stakeholders cited regulatory or cost-based barriers that hinder investment and innovation. And now this, whether this has to do with like zoning and residential restrictions, or just the high cost of retrofitting buildings as would be required under the current code, they say that, look, this is, this doesn't pencil out, is kind of the bottom line. So again, some voices from stakeholders. We need to change zoning from Maple to Center City so that residential, residential becomes allowable. When we reach out to prospective tenants, we show them an aerial view of downtown, and we show them the residential units in the area. Every residential development is an added point to a potential operator. If they have to rely only on drive-in, it lowers the incentive for them to invest. Another stakeholder said, how do we incentivize landlords to open up empty spaces for, for pop-ups? The city needs to not hold back the creative, creativity of shop owners on Grand Avenue who get great ideas and want to move quickly. The big insight here is aligning city expectations with stakeholder realities through targeted code adjustments, flexible implementations, incentive structures, whatever, will be critical to unlocking private reinvestment. The third theme has to do with cleanliness and safety. I don't think this is going to come as a big surprise to anyone here, but it's worth remarking on. While conditions have improved, public safety and street cleanliness remain significant concerns. Stakeholders view this as a foundational issue that affects perception, visitation, and a willingness to invest by other stakeholders. Again, couple of voices here. I created a questionnaire to gather public opinion on Grand. Here's what I was told. One, it is dirty. Two, it has too many homeless people. The second voice, the homeless issue remains something of a problem. So you'll see here that there are people who are losing business as a result of homelessness on Grand Avenue. The big insight is stakeholders strongly support a coordinated, clean, and safe approach, probably through a business improvement district model, with dedicated ambassadors and maintenance crews ensuring daily consistency of cleanliness and safety. Grand Avenue has potential, and that is the fourth theme here. The pride of place is undeniable. I didn't talk to a single person who felt like Grand didn't have a bright future. Consistently, everybody there felt like Grand had a bright future. This despite whatever challenges they may have, you know, experienced themselves with homelessness, with redeveloping their own properties, whatever. And there were substantial challenges that were brought to my attention by current business owners especially on Grand. But all of them still agree, despite all that, Grand has undeniable potential. Some people that we talked to described Grand as magical. They talked about all the artistic nature of it. They talked about how it was authentic. And they emphasized that the revitalization, the efforts that, that the city council and staff should work towards should elevate and not erase the unique character of the city. Two voices here. Escondido used to be magical, and we can go back to that. Imagine all of the holidays, the downtown felt alive, all income demographics mixed. We need to figure out how to bring the most attractive, best stores back to Grand Avenue. Another person said, visitors always seem to be surprised. They see our creativity and quirkiness, and they recognize how much artistic talent is here, but like, why are they surprised? We have so much potential. We always have. The insight here is that the opportunity is to collaborate in shaping a vibrant destination that grows naturally from Escondido's artistic resources, heritage, and community stakeholders. Grand Avenue can become a thriving downtown that feels both authentic and alive. Theme five, stakeholders want a partnership with the city. They want collaboration, they don't want confrontation. A recurring request is for clear communication with all departments at City Hall, and to have a dedicated liaison who can be their point of contact, maybe even somewhat of an internal advocate for their interests within City Hall. Two stakeholder voices. It would be helpful if the city had a dedicated point person who was the contact for stakeholders on Grand. Another person. The city should make it very easy and free for independent events to be held downtown on city sidewalks. The big insight here is that establishing a dedicated city liaison and implementing a simple, predictable process, and I'm going to put an emphasis and a double underline under the word predictable, because I did hear repeatedly that going through the various departments, it could feel like an endless treadmill of revisions and comments and revisions and comments, and there's just not a lot of end. And multiple stakeholders did bring to my attention that in other cities they work with, or in other circumstances, there's predictability to the process. There's, you know, so, there's defined number of revision periods, there's a clear sense of, you know, how long this is going to take from a scope perspective. One person talked about working with another city where there, the, the process is so defined that you actually get into a virtual queue, you know when your application's going to be reviewed down to the month. And then once it is reviewed, there is a, there's a single, you know, initial sort of comment period, and then revisions take place. Then if a second comment period is needed, and a second round of revisions is needed, what happens is the departments all come together with the applicant, and they have an in-person meeting with decision-makers from all departments. The applicant pays the rate, the prevailing wage, for all of those people to be there, but they emerge from that meeting with either approved plans or a clear decision that this project is not moving forward. Right? So there are frameworks in place elsewhere that the stakeholders are looking to and saying, we would love to see some of that. Stakeholder voices here, it'd be very helpful if the city had a, a dedicated point person who was the contact for stakeholders. Again, that comment came up. The city should make it very easy and free for independent, I'm sorry, you know what? I, I apologize. I think I didn't get that. Here, let me pull up. I copied and pasted, and obviously I missed this. Obviously, in general, everyone knows we have some issues with city management, especially in regards to the permitting process. We need to pivot from bureaucracy to business-friendly. Another person said, the city needs to understand what the development process looks like. The default should be closer to how do we get to yes? Marketing and visibility. This is the final big theme that came up over and over again. Stakeholders consistently called for a stronger marketing and storytelling effort about what Grand Avenue offers. They see a need for coordinated promotion that highlights local culture and experiences. Two stakeholder voices here. How to get more visitors is an answer for a desperately needed PR company to give us, and that the city desperately needs PR. Another voice said, we need a major marketing campaign highlighting the connection between both Grand Avenue shopping and dining within the old Escondido Historic District. Maybe a map, a video, lots of social media promoting this as a day tripper's paradise. The big insight here is that a coordinated marketing effort can shift perceptions, improve awareness, and attract new audiences. City staff and the city council should understand this as they move forward with the New City America and the Business Improvement District. So here's some high-level observation across all the themes. One, momentum exists. The Vision Project has created a physical readiness, but what's needed now is activation, marketing, and a regular effort to ensure Grand Avenue is safe and clean. The second kind of big observation, stakeholders are willing partners. They want collaboration, not control, and many are eager to help. Third, challenges here are solvable. Most of the issues will be addressed by emerging city initiatives such as the new City America effort. They can be addressed by process improvement within the city's various departments, or they can be addressed through thoughtful revisions to the downtown specific plan. And the, the fourth observation, potential is just widely recognized. Grand Avenue has the bones, the heritage, the creative talent, and the location. The next chapter requires coordination, partnership, and predictable pathways for stakeholders. So that's what we've gathered so far. Here's what we're contemplating for next steps. First, we need to expand stakeholder outreach. We want to conduct a minimum of an additional 25-plus interviews for broader coverage and demographic diversity. Second, develop a phase recommendation plan for the planning commission first, and then upon approval, city council. What might this look like? Something like a proposed phased problem-solving approach could be that we come up with some sort of short-term, low-cost activation and permitting improvement set of recommendations. Midterm, maybe there's an amendment or some other zoning adjustment and partnership structures that can be put in place. And then long-term, that's where the city council and the city staff are going to have to do some deep work, integrate some recommendations into the downtown specific plan update. Third, we want to build a vision framework. So we want to take all of the input we're gathering, synthesize these stakeholder voices, also do more to talk to the city to understand the city's internal capacities, and get the consultant input. We are talking with New City America. And build all of that into a unified, inspiring vision for Grand Avenue's next decade. So in conclusion, I think the stakeholders have spoken with all of us with passion and clarity. They see a downtown that is physically improved, but they don't see it yet as fully alive. So there's a lot to do, but there's also a lot of will to do it. The task before city staff, council, and this commission is not to reinvent Grand Avenue from the top down. Rather, our mutual interest will be best realized if we activate, empower, and promote what the business owners, investors, and other stakeholders are already ready to do. So that concludes the subcommittee's presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions.
You know, thank you, Commissioner Stevie. That was really good, and I'm really impressed with how your committee has come together, and you've been able to give this update. It looks like a tremendous amount of work has gone into this so far. And, and then you're still ambitious enough to do 25 more interviews to help broaden the input from the, the stakeholders out there. You know what? I would like to at least provide the opportunity for the other committee members if they have something to add, unless Commissioner Stevie has kind of covered everything. Commissioner McCarron. Not that you have to, I'm just giving the opportunity.
I would say one of the, the most recognized parts of feedback was that a lot of people are not just from here. So they're pulling in instances of downtowns like Denver and other cities around, you know, our nation that have come back from, you know, where we are still standing today, whereas Grand is depleted and empty for the most part. So it was really interesting to have instances for them to show what other cities are doing to implement revitalization in their downtowns. And it's all very inspiring. We could probably include a link or two. I think there was some on the feedback to share that with you guys. Because it's really all about small towns turning themselves around with the help of city involvement.
All right. Thanks. Commissioner Spear.
I don't have a lot to add. I just do want to say I'm grateful to the efforts of the other committee members, and it's encouraging to see that, like, what was expressed, that the overwhelming, despite the, you know, you go out and you ask people, tell me what's wrong. You're giving them an opportunity to really complain, but to get the positive perspective universally is really encouraging. So I'm, you know, it echoes my perception that we've got a great thing here, and if we can figure out how to unlock that and improve it and help facilitate that, it's really encouraging.
I agree. Any Commissioner Jester?
So great, great report. Awesome work. Thank you so much. Thanks to all the committee members for sure. So in your So in your next phase of discovery in all of this, will you be identifying what the stakeholders are looking for in the way of events to revitalize the area?
So we'll probably provide examples, and examples have been given to us. The roller rink, for example, was very popular, and people would love to see it come back. But I think for the purposes of what we're up to, the objective is to contemplate what it might look like to allow the downtown business owners to relatively easily and without great cost, put events in motion. Right? So to give a for example, the reason that the ups and downs style roller rink on Grand Avenue was able to happen last year was because Grand Avenue was already shut down for the Vision Project. And so there was no real cost, other than the cost of procuring all the things like the rink and the barriers and stuff. There was no additional cost to putting that up. But what I've been told is that if they wanted to do something similar, the cost to shut down Grand, or to even put it up in some other place, like maybe Maple Street Plaza, would be prohibitive. Right? And that's partly because you have to pay for city staff to shut down that area, you have to pay for, I guess, permitting. I'm not quite sure what all goes into it. But the way that a phased recommendation approach might look is we initially sort of provide a pathway, so the city maybe allot a certain amount of activation to happen at no cost, like they figure out a way to budget that internally, or maybe there's funds dedicated. And then, in the long term, from a specific plan, Planning Commission perspective, I think the city council and the downtown-specific plan need to intentionally contemplate activation zones, where there isn't going to be a massive impedance on traffic flow or something else if you want to have a concert, or do a roller rink, or some other little market or something like that. Right? And in other downtowns, activation zones are dedicated, like they're set aside for that purpose.
Are there any conflicts with the city with regard to events that would not be, that would be prohibited, that you know of?
Can you give me a for example?
I don't know, maybe... I don't know. Is the sky the limit when it comes to events that could potentially be sponsored?
Oh, you mean like, are there broad rules around...
What's allowable?
What's allowable?
Yes.
I'm not aware. So I think that that... I assume there are, but I'm not aware. I think I would defer to the city planner.
I'm sorry? Right, something like that. No naked bike rides. Thank you, Commissioner Spear. I'm sure there's a hookah club or something, a smoking thing probably wouldn't work, but...
Yeah, I mean, so the emphasis from the stakeholders is we want family-friendly events, in no small part because the overall objective is to attract the greatest number of people. Right? And so families spend a lot of money, more people come down. It's not just parents and kids, it's often aunts, uncles, grandparents. Right? And the kind of overriding theme is Grand Avenue feels dead too often, but if we had things going on, it would feel more alive. And then that perception, at some point, you get a virtuous cycle happening. Right? Because the more alive it feels, the more people want to be there, the more people come, the more alive it feels. Right? And it just really spins up. And of course, the really boring, underlying math, when you are contemplating setting up a business, one of the things you do ask a business broker and a real estate broker is, "What does the foot traffic look like?"
Exactly.
Right? And so if we can increase the foot traffic, it increases the actual value, not just the perceived, but the actual value of a property.
Other questions of the committee? The only one that I've got is, during your interviews, did anyone mention that they have seen an uptick in foot traffic because of the Palomar Heights project and the number of people that have been moving in there? And I don't know what the current vacancy is there, but I was just wondering if anybody mentioned that they had seen that uptick.
Yeah, so the short answer is no, but a really interesting development. I did get to talk to the COO of John Paul the Great, and one of the things they are doing is they're actually, they just reached agreement with Palomar Heights. They're moving all of their current student housing from Latitude, which is over by the Transit Center, to Palomar Heights. And one of the ideas he floated past me, which I think is brilliant and a good example of if there was an internal liaison advocate within the city, or a really active bid would probably be a better place for this, he said, "You know, it would be really great if I could sell a meal plan to my students, and that meal plan would give them, say, $15 per meal, two meals a day, that can be used at restaurants on Grant." So it's a relationship between John Paul the Great and... And so as these students are walking up Grand Avenue to the Marlowe, they stop by and get a meal at H Brothers, or Burger Bench, or wherever, and it's part of their meal plan. Right? So Marlowe is, just that relationship alone, I think, is going to start driving more foot traffic than we've previously seen. But the remaining comments I've heard about the Marlowe so far is that it's struggled from a vacancy perspective. And I don't want to go too much into that, but there hasn't been a tremendous amount of foot traffic yet.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that. Any other questions? You know, great job, you guys, because it looks like a lot of work has gone into it, and it looks like you've got a little bit further to go before we, I guess, bring this forward to City Council to get further direction from them on how they'd like to go. So a lot of thanks to the subcommittee. So thank you. Moving on to future agenda items, anyone have anything they want to put on a future agenda? Seeing none. I'm sure there's no oral communications that have come in. And selection of the chair and vice chair. Wow, we've been waiting a long time to get this done. So kind of the way this works is you can nominate yourself. We'll start with chair. You can nominate yourself for the chair position, or someone can nominate somebody for the chair. Acceptance of that nomination needs to be confirmed. If there's more than one person that would be nominated for chair, then we can have a minute for each person to let the commission know why they would be the best person for that actual position. So we'll first go, any nominations?
Yeah, I would like to nominate you, Stan, to continue in the role as chair.
Thank you. I would accept that nomination. Do we have any other nominations? Seeing none. You know what? I really appreciate that nomination. It does take a little bit of work to make sure that we kind of run this in a certain way, and I'm very happy that I got the nomination to continue going at least through the end of this term. So thank you. Do we have to have a vote? All right, if we can have a vote, for myself to continue as chair.
Motion to have Chair Wyler continue as chair for the Planning Commission. Commissioner Macaro?
Yes.
Commissioner Spear?
Yes.
Commissioner Jester?
Yes.
Commissioner Stevie?
Yes.
Commissioner Correll?
Yes.
Commissioner Gustafson?
Yes.
And Chair Wyler?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Moving on to vice chair, I would like to make a nomination for Commissioner Spear. I think he has done an excellent job during his tenure on the Planning Commission, being thoughtful, and has certainly, somebody that I've gone to on many occasions to get his opinion on various things and how we operate. So I'd nominate Commissioner Spear for vice chair.
I sincerely extend my gratitude, and I accept that. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other nominations? All right, seeing none. We can go ahead and... A motion to have Commissioner Spear as the vice chair.
Motion to vote Commissioner Spear as the vice chair of the Planning Commission. Chair Wyler?
Yes.
Commissioner Macaro?
Yes.
Commissioner Spear?
Yes.
Commissioner Jester?
Yes.
Commissioner Stevie?
Yes.
Commissioner Correll?
Yes.
Commissioner Gustafson?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Moving on to planning commissioners' reports, any reports from any of the planning commissioners? All right, seeing none. City planners' report on future agenda items.
Yes. So our next regularly scheduled Planning Commission is October 28th. We will be holding that meeting. There will be a private development project on the agenda for that date. In addition, in November, I mentioned that you all would be receiving emails for a special meeting due to the first meeting in November falling on Veterans Day. I have not yet received an answer from all the commissioners on whether they will be available on November 18th. So could I get a show of hands of who can be present for Tuesday, November 18th, a special meeting? We have a number of development projects that are looking to go to decision, and so right now, we're barely scraping by. So this is November 18th. It's not, this is, I'm not trying, do not feel obligated or anything of that nature. It's purely factual, like can you attend, or can you not? It's not a problem either way. Okay, so we have Stevie, Wyler, Spear, and Gustafson, I saw your hand.
I did raise my hand to be here.
To be here.
I will be here.
But you will be here.
Yeah.
Okay, I feel that one very much. All right, then, we will be holding a November 18th special meeting as a result, and we will be most likely canceling the November 25th meeting as a result, because that one we didn't have quorum on, that one seemed harder to get people to commit to. So please anticipate for those who raise their hand that there will be a November 18th meeting, and we will have a private development project on there. And then we go into December, and we anticipate one meeting in December, December 9th, as the fourth, yes, the fourth Tuesday in December is the day before Christmas Eve, and I anticipate that one being the most challenging to find a quorum for. That being said, there will be a lot of projects coming to you over the next three meetings. We anticipate multiple redevelopment projects within the downtown for residential development, and a general plan amendment as well for residential development in the northern part of the city. So it will be a packed agenda.
All right, thank you.
I have a question. Do we anticipate any challenging issues, maybe similar to what we experienced?
So these projects will most likely require briefings, or we will request briefings from the commission should they wish to attend, simply for the larger-scale nature of the projects. At this point in time, we have not received an overabundance of public comment on them during the review process, so it is to be determined.
All right. Any... Go ahead.
So we would most likely hold for the November 18th and December 9th meeting, briefings. We try to do them at least one week in advance of agenda packet release. So agenda packets are by ordinance required to go out 72 hours prior to the meeting. That would be a Saturday, so we try to get them to you by end of day Friday. When it's a larger project, we try to get them to you by end of day Thursday, so you have a full four days plus Tuesday to review. So briefings would be the previous week, no later than Thursday of that prior week.
Any other questions of the city planner? All right, with that, we will go ahead and adjourn.